We'll call this meeting of the Craving County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, March the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let us stand together as our current county attorney will lead us in prayer, and then I ask you to remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Our God and God of all our ancestors, we ask that the light of your presence guide the hearts and minds of the leaders of this great county gathered here today. May the wisdom of your teachings guide them to act for justice and to lift up the cause of the stranger, the orphan, and the widow. Master of the universe, open the hearts of our leaders with your compassion. Help them to lead with integrity, always remembering that your wisdom resides in every heart as the deepest truth of our humanity. May our leaders always remember that your guidance is not in the heavens alone, nor far beyond the sea, but within each of us, in our mouths, in our hearts, to carry into action in the world. May our leaders therefore serve as beacons of justice and compassion, making this county a light to the masses. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome to each of you and welcome to Western Craving County, which is the home of birthplace of Commissioner Smith and myself. I call it God's country. As each of you know, from the areas in which you represent, you feel the same way. But it's great to have our county staff and the Board of Commissioners here and our citizens participating here in a meeting here in the western end of the county today. Our commissioners, we do have a long day before us. A good day, I think, has been planned out, our regular commissioners meeting, other activities that will take place. I'm going to ask at this time, as the county manager will, just to go over with us what the agenda looks like for today.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So, of course, we have our regular meeting at eight thirty. Tentatively, I think it'll take about an hour. We'll kind of take a small break in between that. At ten a.m., we will have a ribbon cutting just down the street at the Judicial Center where our new fuel station is ready to go. Mr. Hodges will lead us on that. We'll have some vans out front for you. Come back, hopefully tentatively by eleven. We'll start with what is a work session, and we'll work through several items. Most importantly, at noon time, we'll have our legislative luncheon where Senator Perry and Representative Tyson will be with us to talk about what's going on in Raleigh, some of our local goals. And then last thing of the day, I know you're all on pins and needles, is the budget update and where we're headed for that. So, that's the day, sir.
Any questions for county manager's staff? All right. Thank you, Jack. And I, just before we begin too, I just want to thank you and staff, our I.T. folks for everything you've done in preparation for today. Great job. We thank you. Commissioners, before we approve the agenda there, I would also like to take chairman's privilege, if I could. This is our social worker appreciation month, and today, the Craving County Board of Commissioners would like to publicly recognize our fellow citizens who serve as social workers in county agencies such as the DSS and the Health Department. Also, those social workers serving in Craving County schools. I talked to my wife last night. She said there, she thought there were five of those in the county. Our social workers at Carolina East Hospital and other agencies which are public and private throughout the county. Those individuals who have chosen to go into social work as their careers have a strong desire to help empower individuals, families, and communities suffering from complex physical, mental, and economical challenges. Social workers are often on the front line. They provide services directly to individuals suffering from addiction and mental illness in our communities throughout Craving County. And at times, they are faced with very dangerous situations, yet they are willing to perform their duties because of their desire to assist others. Social workers are always on call, twenty-four hours a day. They work long hours, often at the expense of time of themselves and their families. The Craving County Board of Commissioners today want to publicly acknowledge and recognize those individuals that serve and to thank those who serve as social workers and acknowledge that each of you are making a profound impact on the lives of many of our fellow citizens. We have here today our DSS Director, Mr. Jeffrey Merritt. Jeff, please, as you will, go back and share with them the message that's been spoken here today, that we are appreciative of everything that they do. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, you have there before you your agenda packets. Are there any agenda items that you desire to pull or add to this morning's agenda?
Make a motion and approve the agenda as it is.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passed. Next, you have the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three regular session, tax releases and refunds, the social services, additional funding for the Lynx Transition Fund Budget Amendment, emergency services, LP Gas Training Budget Amendment, a proclamation for a month for the military child, and a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull?
Make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith. Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you. Departmental matters, you have there item two, social services, the caterer bid for nutritional program. Mr. Jeffrey Merritt. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, with me, Ms. Alyssa Andrews Brown. She is our Director of Craving County Senior Center. We come before you today, and that is that time where we have to renew our contract with our caterer who provides our home-delivered and corrugate meals. We provide an information to you regarding the one and only bid that we received. We work with our county purchasing agent, Mr. Frank Wilkey, to ensure that we posted these bids for the proper amount of time and actually reposted after only getting one bid, and we still only received this one bid. This bid is from our current caterer, J&amp;S Catering of Bayboro. We have used this caterer for quite some time. You will know that there is a price increase in the cost of meals. The last quote that we did get was in fiscal year nineteen twenty for the year two thousand and twenty-one, and we have been on our current contract for the past three fiscal years. So, we did expect an increase. We have provided a memo to you to kind of explain to you some of the benefits of this caterer that we have seen. But as with a price increase, there could be some challenges that come in and continue in our service at the level that we currently have. We think that we will continue to be, continue to be able to do that, but just fairly with the funding that we have. But we are dependent upon home care community block grant funding that is allocated to us through the state. So, if that amount changes, it could restrict our ability to provide services at the level that we do. We will be happy to take any questions that you may have regarding this bid.
Questions from the board.
We'll move.
All right. We have a motion to approve the caterer contract for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Howard. Discussion. Jeff, I reckon, in taking from what you're saying, you think you're going to be able to continue to provide services for all of those currently that are foretaking. Do you see any additional funding coming from other funding sources, the increase in our allocation?
Well, we are totally relying on that home care community block grant, Chairman Jones, and the county does provide a ten percent match. But we do rely solely on that funding that is allocated through the state budget, through federal funds. So, there are some state funds in there as well. We don't foresee any additional funding sources from other areas at this time. So, we will-
I reckon what I should have said, and I apologize, I didn't say it correctly, you seeing your funding source increasing the amount of money that they are giving after they see the cost of inflation?
I have not heard of that. Ms. Andrews Brown, you've been at those aging planning board meetings sometimes. I'm always able to go in their area agency, and they may give us updates. Have you heard anything?
No, there has not been any talk about any permanent increases. I know last fiscal year, there was a four-year recurring increase of about thirty-seven thousand, I believe, and that, I don't know if it's going to be renewed at the end of those four years. We were informed that we will be getting some ARPA funds to maybe offset some of this. We might be able to offset temporarily, but again, that's only temporary funds. But at this moment, we're unsure of any additional funding coming from that source.
All right. Jack?
Mr. Chairman, it never fails, it seems like we work through the aging planning board that Commissioner Smith serves on, and we come up with a budget at this time of year so we can include something in the document that you guys approve in June. And it seems to never fail that there's some adjustment made right after we've done our work, usually in August, September. I think there's, of course, no guarantees in that, but it's wholly determined on what the federal government allocates and how the state then chops it up. But I think over the last, I don't know, three or four years, we've had significant adjustments after the budget's been approved by the Board of Commissioners, so.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Any additional questions? Commissioner Howard?
Jason, just, Jack, taking us back to the federal level, does this go back to the, what they discussed at NACO, the farm bill? Is this block grant part of that?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. So, obviously, this is existing funding under the existing bill. The new bill would include some of the things, and it funds a lot of the programs that are related through security.
Yeah. So, if that's approved, I mean, what they're working on moves forward, it could change-
Could.
-funding mechanisms.
Sure could.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion? Here none. We do have a motion and a second. Here no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You both. The next item is human resources, the Trillium opioid remediation grant funding budget amendment. Ms. Amber Parker. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board. Trillium has awarded the opioid task force a fifty thousand dollar grant in connection with Trillium's opioid remediation request for funding. The funds will be used to purchase low-cost naloxone, distribute at no cost to municipal, nonprofit, private organizations within Craving County that serve people that are at risk of experiencing or witnessing an overdose. Craving County's opioid task force coordinator will complete the purchase of the low-cost naloxone kits and coordinate distribution and supply replenishment based upon need to all municipalities within Craving County, including New Bern, Havelock, Riverbend, Trent Woods, Dover, Coast City, Advanceboro. Naloxone distribution will include volunteer fire and rescue squads, municipal fire departments, municipal police departments, and the Craving County Sheriff's Office. Naloxone will also be distributed to nonprofit organizations such as RCS, The Gathering Place, Coastal Women's Shelter, Advanceboro Christian Help Center, Mercy Clinic, and Promise Place. The goal is to increase naloxone availability across the community to reduce opioid-related deaths where they are likely to occur. Naloxone distribution will also be considered based upon need for private organizations where overdose is due or may occur, such as large shopping centers and large employers. What we'll do is put out information to our partners to see what they need. I know there are some municipalities like Havelock that also did receive a grant under this program. One hundred percent of the opioid remediation program funding from Trillium will be used to purchase the low-cost naloxone kits. Craving County's opioid task force coordinator will provide the training and training materials that are necessary for these organizations to make sure that they are using them properly, they're trained, they know how to store them, and that's required under the standing order for the naloxone distribution.
All right. Motion to approve. All right. We have a motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Hunt. Discussion on the motion. Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith. Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? I just want to recognize Commissioner Hunt, who brought this grant opportunity back from her regional Trillium meeting a couple, I guess, a month ago or so, and Amber and her team for writing a great grant, getting it done on record time, probably. So, good teamwork.
Excellent. All right. Item four is finance, the reimbursement declaration. Ms. Craig Warren. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Board. I have one item of business on the agenda for you this morning, and that is a reimbursement declaration for the Sudan Temple property. If the Board will recall, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the county closed on the purchase of the Sudan Temple property for six million plus closing costs. The source of these funds to purchase this property came from the county's fund balance. In order to preserve our ability to reimburse ourselves from any future proceeds on a tax-exempt borrowing, the county must declare since ten to later than sixty days after the original expenditure. So, attached in your agendas for your review is a reimbursement declaration that was executed by myself on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, which puts us into sixty-day window. And so, at this time, I'm asking for the Board to, to review that declaration and to ratify it.
Any questions for Mr. Warren before we entertain the motion? No questions. I have a motion that we approve, the ratified execution of the reimbursement declaration. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passed. Thank you. Yes, Vice Chair.
Mr. County Manager, we continue to get questions about the process. Could you just give us an update on what we've done and what we're doing next regarding the-
I have a series of slides in the work session on this. I'd be happy to cover them now, or we can handle them.
Thank you, Craig. Item five is a great grant contract. Ms. Steve Bennett. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board. On Monday, March twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two, the Craving County Board of Commissioners voted to submit a letter of support for Brightspeed's formerly CenturyLink great grant application, committed up to five hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds as a match should Brightspeed be awarded the great grant by the state. The growing rural economies with access to technology great program funds the deployment of broadband within unserved areas of economically distressed counties. The grant helps, the grant helped bring high-speed internet to thousands of North Carolinians, businesses, and farmers in the most rural and remote areas of the state. These areas include both tier one and tier two counties, as well as rural census tracts located in development tier three areas that are currently served by less than twenty-five megabits per second download and three megabits per second upload speeds. Underserved areas are defined as census tracts that have no households served with high-speed internet access. In September of two thousand and twenty-two, Brightspeed was awarded more than nine million, ninety million dollars in grants to install broadband internet to rural counties across, rural communities across twenty-nine counties, including Craven. After a review of the reward, it was determined that Craven's final match was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our recommendation is to authorize the county manager and staff to finalize the necessary great grant contract between the state of North Carolina, Brightspeed, and Craving County, and to execute the final contract and to pay the county's match of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars pursuant to the final contract.
All right. Questions from the board?
What counties do they cover?
What counties?
I mean, what districts?
What districts? Okay. Jordan, if you'll go ahead and show the map. It's a little hard to see here in this room, but we cover areas in Adams Creek District. There is some James City and New Bern.
Do me a take, Steve.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Commissioner Mark, he covers District Five, anything down Adams Creek. There are some very remote areas on the north of the peninsula or west. I'm trying to think about directional. Comes down, picks a little bit up in Township Six, Township Seven, then mainly picks up a big chunk in Township Two, District Two, and District One up around one eighteen, Piney Neck Road in that area. So, I believe, Steve, it was twenty-one hundred and forty-four homes total, which was the largest amount of homes, I believe, in any of the packages we submitted, Steve.
Correct.
And again, two hundred and fifty thousand matched from the county, but it touches everybody. Now, this does not include anybody that's in an existing program like ARDOF, which was another federal program, and there's still some, of course, some areas that weren't included in this, so. But this is a big chunk of what was left.
Yeah.
And the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar match from the county is coming from?
It comes from the ARPA money, the federal money, and that was a requirement of the grant program. Thank you.
Other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion and a second to authorize county manager and staff to finalize the great grant contract and to execute the final contract and to pay the county's match of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Additional discussion? I do have one item. How soon do you think they will be acting on this?
So, contract, we heard from Brightspeed on Thursday. They're hoping to have a finalized contract this week from us, our portion of the materials. I know that they're doing engineering and design work now, as well as material procurement. So, there is a timeline. I think it's four years on the grant.
Yep.
So, within the next four years.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the things, and I'm just going to show you kind of what a great job our I.T. folks, facilities folks did, this may be the first one going back, first contract in the state that was awarded. So, we are sort of kind of ahead of the curve, which hopefully we wanted to be first, you know, in the first few in line.
Not to linger on, but just one additional question. You have to refresh my memory. So, to get to these areas, they've got to pass other homes that have internet. And I know this is targeted just for those that do not have internet, adequate internet. But, you know, if they put in a new line across this thing in front of my house, do I have the opportunity to have greater speed too as a result of that, or is it only going to target those twenty-one hundred and forty-four?
While the target is for those twenty-one hundred homes, we had been told that if they're, you know, if they're going through an area and there is a house across the street that was not eligible or could not be counted because it was covered in a, in a different census block, but it would make sense that they would go ahead and pick that up too because it's a potential customer.
Good news. All right. Any, yes, Vice Chair.
Just a quick point of information, and it's not important, but just so everybody knows, Brightspeed is a name that a lot of people don't know. It is CenturyLink, correct?
It, it is complicated.
That's their old name.
It, it is a, it is a group that CenturyLink split into, into two different companies, and this is one of those companies that handles specifically fiber optic infrastructure in, in their areas.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Here none. We do have a motion and a second. Here no additional discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith. Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you, Steve, and I appreciate all you've done. Item six is appointments. You have there pending appointments. Do any commissioners have any nominations for any pending? Here none. We will move to current. First, I, appointments you have under current is the Highway Seventy Quarter Committee.
Chairman, I would extend both those appointments.
So, you're asking to defer both Mr. Danny Walsh and Mr. Bobby Darden, all right? We have a desire to defer, and everybody in agreement, all right? Here no opposition. We will move on. Next will be the Fire and Relief Fund Board. All of these individuals have been contacted. They do seek a reappointment. I will, first, Commissioner Mark, you got right. Many of these. We'll go through the first few here. They're in your areas. Keith Morris, Township One.
Yes.
So, we have a nomination of Mr. Morris. Are there additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next with Marlo Jones from Township One, Advanceboro. Mr. Mark? Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Jones. Are there any additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next would be Matthew Spico from Township Two, Tri-Community.
Reapoint.
Okay, we have the nomination. Are there additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next would be Harlow, Commissioner Hunt, Mr. Milton Everett.
Reapoint.
Okay, we got the nomination of Mr. Everett. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next, Vice Chair Booker, we have Oswald Chance from Township Seven.
Yes, I've read him.
Okay, we got the nomination of Mr. Chance. Are there additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next, Commissioner Robert Baylock from Township Seven.
Nominate him.
We have the nomination of Mr. Baylock. Any additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next item would be the Fire Tax Commissioner. I'll seek reappointment. We will do it the same manner. First would be Mr. Samuel Lilly from Township One. We have the nomination. Any additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next would be Township Two, Little Swift Creek, Mr. Tommy Cowan.
Reapoint.
Have the nomination of Mr. Cowan. Any additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next would be Mr. Terry Gaskins.
Reapoint.
We have the nomination of Mr. Gaskins. Any additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Excuse me. Next, Vice Chair Booker, we have Mr. McKinney from Township Seven.
Yes, I nominate him.
We have the nomination of Mr. McKinney. Are there additional nominations? Here none. We set by affirmation. And next, again, Commissioner Mark, Township Two, Tri-Community, Thomas Gaskins.
Reapoint.
Have the nomination of Mr. Gaskins. Any additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. Next, you have the EMS Services. You have the reapportment of Mr. Chuck Strickland from Vitam. Commissioner Hunt, you serve on that committee.
I will reapoint.
Okay, we ask that he be reapointed. Are there any additional nominations? Here none. We will set by affirmation. All right, that takes care of all our current. You see the upcoming terms expiring. Please take note of them. Any additional nominations today for any appointments? Not, now we will move to County Attorney's Report. Ms. Derry Gray. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have two items for your consideration this morning. The first is an initial offer to purchase real estate that the county owns with the city of New Bern. We acquired it by virtue of a tax foreclosure sale. The parcel was located on Lee's Avenue with a parcel ID number of eight dash oh oh six dash one seven three. The original taxes foreclosed upon and the costs of that process together were two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety cents. We have an offer in the amount of two thousand dollars with a tax value of four thousand. Since we do own this jointly with the city of New Bern, we've let the city consider it first, and they have given their initial approval. Assuming you do so this morning, it'll be put out for upset bids and brought back before the Board for final approval, probably in the May time, time frame.
All right. What's the desire of the board?
Make a- Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion to adopt the resolution approving transaction and authorize an upset bid process.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right.
The second item is of a high level of significance to the county. It involves the phase-two settlement in the opioid class action. As the Board may recall, there was an initial settlement that we approved quite some time ago. This is a settlement with primarily pharmacies that distributed opioids. We've got some big names like CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Many of you have probably seen an update from the County Commissioners Association outlining the general parameters, and in your agenda packet, we, we, we cut out the primary part of that communication that basically says in this phase-two settlement, seven hundred and fifty million dollars will come to North Carolina, and out of that, eighty-five percent will go to local governments. We're going to follow the same funding and split formula that was associated with the phase-one settlement. It is difficult to put a very precise number on the overall settlement, what's going to come to North Carolina, and then what we're going to get because the overall settlement value depends on the level of participation nationwide. And there's some metrics about how the settlement gets paid over the coming year, by the coming years, by the settling defendants that can impact the overall amount. But the number that's getting batted around right now is ten, ten billion dollars with a B. And so, that's your nationwide settlement. Seven fifty coming here, and then that'll be distributed internally in North Carolina between counties and cities as, as the phase-one proceeds were. between counties and cities as, as, uh, the Phase One proceeds were. Before you for your consideration today is the settlement approval, uh, and also to delegate to your chairman and staff authorization to sign what needs to be signed and, and to get back to the class action lawyers to settle the thing. Uh, there is a deadline on this, the deadline is actually, uh, April seventeenth. Um, it's before the Board for approval today, but also noting how significant a matter this is, if there's any discussion the Board needs to have or any further information. We've got some building time for that, um, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, it, it, it's up to you all, you all on how to handle.
All right, Commissioners, you got any questions, concerns?
I just had a question for Jack. Um, Jack, uh, with this distribution, I know you've had conversations with the school systems on prevention, that's, that's still on the table, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And this was money that we were not anticipating, correct? I mean, when we first started this and trying to create a plan how to spend these funds.
Right, so we've been working really hard over the first settlement to come up with a plan, and now we have a second settlement that's, you know, gonna have to be factored in. I, I do think we, you know, we have plans to bring forward Phase One, uh, during the budget process with you, give you some recommendations on ways to use the, the initial money, and we'll just keep adding to it as we move along. Uh, it is airing, just refreshing here, over eighteen years, is that correct, still discerned?
That's, that's correct, and, uh, different defendants are paying over different timeframes. For instance, I think CBS is may- maybe paying over ten years, and Walgreens is paying over five. So there'll be a little bit of variation in the timing of the payments, uh, and these are not all the defendants. I don't know that they'll necessarily be a, a Phase Three or Phase Four or Phase Five with the number that begins, uh, with a B as in billion. But there are defendants that have filed bankruptcy, and, and as those cases are resolved, there'll be some more residual settlement flows. But, uh, I doubt anything of this magnitude.
Okay, here no further discussion, uh, do we have a motion, you've heard the recommendation and suggestion of County Attorney. I won't read back over that, but you have it there before you to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next would be the County Managers' Report.
Mr. Chairman, you're gonna hear a lot from me today, so I, I won't bore you with all the things we're gonna talk about later. But, uh, two things of significance over the last couple of weeks. Attended on Thursday, an airport groundbreaking for the new terminal expansion, great, great event, modernization still going on there. Lot of, lot of projects in the hopper, this was one of the big ones, I think, that the Airport Authority was looking at. Second, uh, early last week, I was able to, with some staff and Commissioner Booker, to visit with some NC State, uh, college students that were here on their spring break doing, uh, service work, we were able to have a meal with them, a Baptist on a mission, and just what a great experience that was. I think it was about twenty-five, um, before that, they had a group of Penn State students that came in the week before, and I think that was a larger number. But these young folks are doing a lot of good in our community, so just want to point that to the Board.
Thank you, sir, any questions now for the County Manager?
I would just add to that, that a group of County Managers' staff actually cooked the meal, believe it or not, and served it. Uh, I, I helped serve, I didn't do any cooking, but, um, it was good, it was good. And I think we're scheduled to do that again somewhere down the road, so, uh, it's, it's nice, uh, to see that we have some guys and, and, and gals that can cook.
I, I gotta say one more comment, I almost forgot, but I had, uh, one of the best strawberry shortcakes I've ever had in my life, and that was prepared by Commissioner Smith, who donated two desserts to the, the young folks here, so it was, uh, fantastic.
Actually, I think he ate one there and took one home.
Thank you. All right, next would be Commissioners' Report, um, we'll begin today, Commissioner Hunt, you want to start us off?
I'll have a report, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Smith.
Nothing.
Commissioner Mark.
Nothing.
Um, Commissioner Howard.
I just wanted to make a note, um, got a call from a citizen this week and, um, speeding on their road, and, uh, kid almost getting hit, Staley Pines, and, um, called the sheriff within, I think, within twelve hours, we had the, the electronic sign up. Uh, within twenty-four hours, we had police presence on the road, um, got a lot of positive calls back from that. So that was kudos to our sheriff for ma- acting so quickly, I appreciated that. Um, and one more thing, March twenty-seventh, we'll be having another town hall, kind of a Representative Tyson slash, I'll be attending also Town Hall in Carolina Pines Firehouse, because last time we had it, there were a lot of questions that were more state-level type questions that I had no control over, so it'll be nice to have someone that can answer those questions with, you know, some kind of, uh, authority, so that's it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Booker.
Just to elaborate, um, on what the County Manager mentioned about the, uh, the young people coming in, there were, um, four buildings in James City that were targeted to, uh, for demolition. And three of those buildings are now gone, uh, physically not there anymore. And it's pretty exciting, two things that happened as a result. Uh, one of the neighbors of one of these buildings, who has a nice home, um, set up a table and brought food from, I'm not sure which restaurant, but literally brought food to feed these kids. They didn't need to, um, they're being fed all right, but, uh, this neighbor was so appreciative that, that, that derelict house was torn down, that she fed, fed them. Uh, the other comment would be that during the week, someone else who has a house that can't afford to tear it down actually came, wasn't from my district, from another district, actually came and asked if they could have their home demolished, torn down. So little by little, it's great to see, uh, these kids doing this work, not just kids, adults too. Uh, I think this week, there's a large group of adults here, uh, doing not just teardown, but actually reconstruction of, of homes that were damaged during the hurricane. And so, uh, it's just, uh, a, a real asset to this community that Baptist on men are here and doing what they're doing. So, very, uh, very good and exciting, uh, improvement to our community.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and we appreciate your involvement in that also.
If you'd like to share it.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, we think, I do have something I'd like to share.
You're right here.
In Pembroke, we had, um, the men from Baptist Mission to put the roof on the house, and, uh, they did a great job. And the neighbor was so excited until he joined them, um, at Gerald Stadlen, and, and he does that kind of work. And he, he helped them to put the roof on the, on the house in front of his house. So that was exciting, and, uh, we took pictures of them, and, uh, we al- also had a town hall, uh, this month, and we had a, the hall for Pembroke and the Pleasant Hill Communities, and the turnout was relatively small, it wasn't a huge turnout, but we had a fantastic hall meeting, so it all went very well.
Great.
Exciting.
Thank you for sharing. Um, this morning, I'd like to, uh, address an item that I know is on a lot of folks' mind, some may be here today and viewing online. But, um, this Board of Commissioners, over the last two weeks, have received a lot of, uh, contacts, emails about, um, Craven County Animal Shelter. Uh, I want everyone to know first, we've been accused of, um, of not acting. Well, this is our first meeting since our last meeting. Um, we have tried to respond to the best of our ability in listening to folks and, and trying to be considerate. There have been, some folks have been very nice to this Board of Commissioners, there have been some folks that have not been so nice to this Board of Commissioners. Um, that's their right, but I feel like, and I, everybody that sits here today, uh, has tried to respond appropriately, um, in saying, thank you, we're listening, it's not falling on deaf ears. And I didn't want this opportunity today to go by for those that may be here, for those that are listening again, to think that we are not listening. Uh, we are, we, we have heard the concerns. We also want you to know that there are others on the other side of this issue that feel differently, and we have also heard from them also. Um, something I do want to address, that I think a lot of folks may have not heard that this Board of Commissioners did, and that was some few months ago, we took action to hire a veterinarian, a county veterinarian, full-time, that would go to the animal shelter and would not only assume the role of veterinarian, but would assume the role as director of the vet- of the animal shelter too. We took that action before some of the other things came evolved, and, um, folks have been coming to us and asking us to make other choices. But that has already been put in place, county staff is actively being, trying to advertise for that position. We have applicants for the position, and that is moving forward. And today, I, I know, I just want to, if you don't mind, giving us an update on the status of the applicants, how much longer you think you will leave that position open, if you don't mind, not trying to catch you off guard, but I, um, share what you can, if you don't mind.
Sure, uh, I know we've received, uh, at least two applicants, or that was the last time I got an update. I do understand interviews are forthcoming, um, our goal was always to get someone in place as soon as possible. Uh, once those interviews are done, of course, the recommendation comes from the Health Director, Scott Harrelson, and, uh, we'll consider that, get them on and get them going. I mean, my guess would be certainly have somebody here before the new fiscal year, could be much sooner. Depends on the, of course, who the candidate is and if they're working, and they have to wind down a practice or whatever they're up to.
Okay, thank you. And, and again, this, the point of this today is, for those that may be saying, well, you're not responding to us, we just want you to know that other actions have been put in place, uh, before citizens started coming to us and recommending other things. I think this Board of Commissioners, and I've heard nothing no different, that, you know, we're going to head in that direction as of today and, and hire that county veterinarian. What we do beyond that will be discussions for another time. Um, we're gonna handle one thing at a time, I think, is what I've heard about this Board. And, and again, we want everybody to know that we want the best for all of our animals, um, we don't want any animal not treated right. Um, we want them treated with respect, and I think we've done that. If you go back and look at the budget from years ago, we have, I think we've almost, we've doubled it, almost tripled it, I think, if I'm correct. The budget is almost being tripled since I've been on this Board of Commissioners and others. The amount of money that we're spending at the animal shelter, uh, definitely, I'm not trying to say that more can't be done. Um, and we will continue to strive for better, and that, that's what we're here for. But, um, I think we've made great progress, and, um, so I, I would just encourage those that, as you continue to communicate with your Commissioners, you respect your Commissioners, please do so, we want you to do that, we don't discourage you at all. But we want you to know that things are in processes, and, and that, and we're moving forward with that. All right, here nothing else, um, that will be brought up in this regular Commissioners' meeting. Jack, as you said, we're gonna take a recess, I think we're gonna maybe, what time is it now?
It's nine fifteen. I think we can go get to the, uh, nine thirty. Uh, if you want to, I mean, that'll be the time to get there, and then be back about ten thirty probably.
All right, so we're gonna take a recess, we're gonna go do the ribbon cutting over at the Judicial Center for the, um, the gas pumps, our new gas facility we got there. We will then come back to this location, and then we will prepare for Senator Perry and Representative Tyson, who will be coming to have a work session with them, and, um, so we invite all of our citizens to come back and participate in that also. So here nothing else, we will recess to go to, um, over to the.
We don't have address, it will just be.
Okay.
First building you get to on the Judicial Center property.
All right.